In the structure, it's essentially an additional story. So that would be a five-story building, four stories set on top of the parking podium. But similar design principles is breaking down the mass with a varied roofscape, varied materials, so we don't have, again, unbroken exposures of a similar material to continue to create a more residential scale for the building. And finally, the fourth perspective that we have, again, this is a view that we showed during the last hearing. This shows the existing condition along Amesbury. We're looking south, back towards Route 3A. In the foreground, you can see a building from the Avalon Bay Phase One neighborhood. That is a three-story building. And then, of course, just beyond, on the right, is the Building 19 warehouse. This view, again, quite similar that we presented during the last hearing. The big change, again, is that the building has been set back about 15 feet from the Amesbury Street. So I think you can make out that it's far more, even in this rendering, again, more visible in the landscape plan, but a far more generous setback with the ability for more generous landscaping and screening, if you will, to the Bradley Woods neighborhood. But again, same approach to the architecture, residential roofscape, breaking down of the facades with varied materials. And emphasis, again, on this first floor, as I've said many times, the prevailing characteristic of the shipyard is very friendly neighborhood-scale first floor with entry doors on the street. So we want to make sure we continue that. Again, larger setbacks in this particular condition, but we think appropriate for a kind of gateway to this part of the shipyard. I have a couple more slides here to walk through the floor plans for the project. Here we are on the ground floor. I think Joe is going to cover the basic traffic circulation issues about the site, so I'll stay just within the floor plan for this particular slide. But this is a, as I described, the first level of the project, primarily parking, but being careful along these important exposures, as we just showed in the rendering along Amesbury and the corner of 3A, to create, again, along Amesbury, a lining of the parking garage with these five dwelling units, again, with their own private access and walkways onto the street. And then at this important corner, locating the leasing fitness center for the project. We have 268 parking spaces within this garage footprint. And it's organized with basic access to the garage to the north here, and then two elevator cores rising up. One elevator core here with access to leasing in the fitness center, so that residents can gain convenient access down via this elevator to the fitness and the leasing center. And then over to the west to get good circulation vertically to the units, a second elevator core, of course, with access to the parking at this location. This shows the typical floor plan, levels two, three, and four. You can see, again, as I described in the massing diagram, the long bar of the building, the bar running east-west, being pushed into the center of the parcel, rather than the two large courtyards. In the original design, we essentially have five, I think, more residential-scale courtyards. One of them is a change where the courtyard has been depressed and comes down and engages grade. So that is a courtyard at grade, again, with the leasing in many spaces oriented to that courtyard. But the other four are sit on top of the one-level parking podium. The largest of the four courtyards, right here, is where we're proposing the really common amenities, outdoor amenities for the residents. So you can see the pool. It's not shown here, but the second floor would likely have a club room, probably in this location, second floor only, so with an interior club room, common room associated with the pool. The other three courtyards are really more private in nature, where the units that surround them really benefit mostly from those smaller courtyards. So units at the second floor line would have their own private terraces out onto that courtyard. And of course, units above would simply enjoy access and views down to those courtyards. The structure of the building on the typical floor is pretty straightforward. Here's the elevator core that rises up from the leasing and fitness area, and the second core that I showed that comes from the parking garage. And then a pretty straightforward, again, structure for the residential units with double-loaded corridors providing access to the units. And then finally, this shows the level-five floor plan. So again, while the typical floor plan has 53 units, this floor is scaled back significantly, again, as I described in the massing diagram and in the renderings, the important exposures along Amesbury, 3A, and then Shipyard Drive, again, the building has been stepped down, if you will. So where the typical floor has 53 units, it's reduced in about half on level five to about 28 units. And all of those units are pretty much organized towards the north or towards the center of the floor plan. So again, so that these would be the five-story portions of the building stepping down to the four-story along the perimeter. I think I'll turn it over to Tom now.
Am I supposed to be using this?
Yeah.
Can anybody hear me? Oops. Can anybody hear me? Good. Good evening. Tom Minor, Hock Design, landscape architects. We are in the preliminary stages of the design for this community. So we're going to start off by showing some typical courtyards that have been done, that Avalon has done on many of their projects. These are all wonderful, heavily-used courtyards, either on ground levels or on podium second stories. You can see we have combinations of seating areas, little pool areas, function areas with patios or fireplaces, fire pits, again, pools, sun decks, grilling stations, little congregation areas with overhead structures or lights. A lot of landscaping. In the case of being on podiums, we typically just stick with low shrubs, ground covers, ornamental grasses, various hardscapes, try to get some elevation if we can, but nothing with heavy, deep roots. And if there are any areas, we work with the architects and engineers to keep those over columns. Our next slide is our second-level conceptual site plan, showing the five courtyards that Ed mentioned, over the second level and ground level, created by his creative use of the floor plan. The only ground-level courtyard we have is this one right here, outside of the leasing office, the lobby, and the fitness area. That brings some nice green space to the street level, as well as a nice parkland, park-like activity space right adjacent to the ground-level leasing area. Our five second-level spaces, as Ed mentioned, our four second-level spaces, as Ed mentioned, three are more private areas, yet to be designed. But our focus is the pool amenity area with grill areas, fire pits or fireplaces, seating areas, and that's adjacent to an indoor club room. As I said previously, these are wonderful spaces that are heavily used. They provide four-season interest from all the surrounding apartments, looking down and looking out onto them. They are not in any final design yet, so like I said, they'll be a combination of low material. In the past, we have used lawn, both natural and synthetic. That's up in the air as to how that'll be treated right now. But there is a lot, there'll be a lot of flowers, ground covers, and ornamental grasses to give the visual benefit of the residents. If we could zoom in on our entry. As you can see, we've started to introduce a little bit of a stone wall here. This is about a two-to-three-foot-high stone wall that mimics the Bradley Woods wall up the street. That helps to kind of tie the community together, or tie our community together with the neighborhood, as well as allows us to provide some birmingham features in back of the wall. That's two, three, actually, three-fold. It starts to screen the parking. It gets our plant material up a little bit higher and showcases a little bit better when it's on slopes. And it also allows us to create a platform for the standard Avalon Bay identification signage that will be in the next slide, Michael. This is their standard signage package. It's a dark gray, in this case, it's a dark gray metal with white letters. It's on a, beyond another granite or stone wall podium platform above the existing stone wall that surrounds it. Will surround it by evergreen deciduous flowering shrubs, ground covers, lot of perennials. I would like to take the opportunity, our site lighting is in the progress process of being designed now. In this case, we'll have a couple of spot, ground-mounted spotlights to light up the sign. In addition, our site lighting will be LED fixtures, 12, 14-foot poles. They are cut-off fixtures, shielded fixtures to reduce the amount of light spillage into the sky, across the property lines, and into our residents' apartments. In the podium areas, we'll use 42-inch light bollards. Those will safely illuminate the sidewalks and patios without getting any additional light up into the second, third, fourth story windows and over the property lines. And that concludes my presentation.
Great. Thank you, Tom. At this point, we'd like to talk about our civil engineering, brief presentation.
Rick Latini with Howard Stein Hudson. I'm going to briefly go through the infrastructure, because I don't think there's a, there's not a lack of infrastructure in this particular area. As I mentioned before, there's a three-phase power available around the whole site. It actually is fed through the back of the site today, and that's what we'd be doing in the future. For the sewer, it actually goes out to the front, and there's an eight-inch gravity pipe that goes to the Bradley Woods pump station. There's a force main that pumps it back out to a 15-inch force main in Lincoln Street, and that eventually goes to the MWRA pump station out in Stoddart's Neck. For water service, there's actually an eight-inch line in the front and in the back of the building. For drainage, there's not much in the front. The roof has downspotters that go to grade, and a lot of the stuff out front just drains out into either 3A or USS Amesbury Drive. This one drains out here, and this system actually goes to the west. A lot of this area drains to a catch basin in 3A, and this actually gets to an 18-inch pipe that goes down USS Amesbury Drive. There's also another 12-inch pipe here that catches a little part of this front part of the site that also goes down there. And I don't know why, there's three drain lines, but there's yet a 24-inch drain pipe that goes here, and that catches a lot of the drainage in the back of our site. So the big change from the last time we were here is we've added this infiltration system that picks up about half of the roof drainage. The reason why is when we build the site, the 12- and 18-inch line, it'd get a lot less flow from our site, and the 24-inch will be less, not as much, probably a reduction like in a few percentage points. It's mostly, because I said, the way the drainage works, a lot is going to go to the 24-inch, once again, reducing the peaks. Existing, there's, like I said, there's some catch basins out in the street that do little water quality treatment, not much. We're providing, this is not a catch basin, it's actually a water quality unit, which actually has like a vortex separator, so it gets more than just the sand out of the stormwater before it goes downstream. And also, this line here with the catch basin in the back will go to a water quality inlet also, an offline one. For the sewer, we would keep, sorry, that's the next slide. For the sewer, we'd keep the same connection. We would probably televise it, it's a vitrified clay pipe, so we'd check the condition of that. It's probably older. The water line here would stay in the front. The one in the back is an eight-inch, and we just have to relocate it, because it's currently located where the building is proposed. And as I already mentioned, the electric comes to the back today and it'll come back in the future. With that, I think Joe's going to take us through the circulation onsite and then some of the offsite mitigation.
Joe, San Clemente, Transportation Engineer with Howard Stein Hudson. So just quickly, I'd like to walk through the site plan. Ed touched briefly on the site plan, but more looking at site access. As we, in terms of transportation engineers, started taking a look at the site, we really took a close look at how vehicle flows get through the area and how access would best be served for this site. Today, USS Amesbury Drive is currently a right-in, right-out with a forced right-turn island. We took a very hard look at whether there was a different type of traffic control warranted at this location, or whether this was the best configuration. Given the proximity to the signals and the wide cross-section on Route 3A, and taking a look at the current projected traffic volumes, we did feel that retaining a right-in, right-out on USS Amesbury was the best choice. It does not meet any types of warrants for the introduction of a traffic signal, nor would it work well in relation to the other signals along the corridor and the turning lanes that are along there. I will revisit the right-turn island that is there today and talk about some enhancements based on some input that we have heard along the way, what we could do to improve that situation. Overall, about 60% of the traffic is projected to head north of the site along Route 3A, with the remaining 40% of it head to other locations. But we do want to retain two points of access to help diffuse any traffic impacts that the project would have. There would be a two-way driveway in the back that would also serve as the fire lane. And we've also carved out a loading area outside of that fire lane adjacent to the building to accommodate a vehicle as large as a tractor-trailer, which could happen with a, you know, cross-country move for apartment of this type. The garage itself would have multiple access points all along the top of the service drive. These are all access points, so there's multiple ways in and out of the garage. Meanwhile, the surface parking lot, which would be for visitor parking or overflow parking, would be access off of Amesbury Drive where they could come back into the rear. We are proposing to construct a new sidewalk along the north side of the service road up to this crosswalk point that would go to the pedestrian walkway. This is covered within the garage to the lobby and elevator core. And then we would be introducing a new sidewalk connection that would, but would continue where the sidewalk ends currently, next to the daycare property, to allow for that pedestrian connection into the shipyard and to commercial businesses over in that location. Also, there will be covered bike storage near the pedestrian walkway and bike storage near the front entrance. So in terms of traffic analysis, we took a very broad look at the larger area. The orange and blue dots indicate intersections that we studied in detail. There were nine locations that we looked at throughout the area, from along Route 3A, Lincoln Street, Beale Street, and Fattler Road, all the way down to Thaxter Street. We conducted traffic counts in the morning and evening commuter-peak periods, which is usually the key point of concern, particularly for residential developments and for commuting patterns along this corridor. But we also took a look at the Saturday midday, which is the peak condition for the commercial uses in the shipyard. We also conducted a series of continuous traffic counts that span over a course of 72 hours to really understand the ebbs and flow of traffic conditions throughout the shipyard along this corridor, as well as monitoring travel speeds and truck activity. In terms of how people get around in this location, the US Census conducts what's called American Community Survey, which takes a look at a specific zone. It's a very small area, specific to this neighborhood of Hingham, about current commuter patterns for residents of Hingham on days that they do commute. Overall, we're seeing that people that live in this area currently, there's about 68% of them commute by automobile on a typical day. And about, almost 20, just shy of 20%, are commuting, taking advantage of the various public transit options. Very close to the ferry, there's MBTA bus service, and it's also a short drive to the commuter rail station. What's really interesting to me in this graph, and this is bigger than what I've seen in a lot of communities, is almost 10% of people work from home and do not commute on a typical basis. So to provide a conservative estimate for our project, we want to take this information and make projections about how people, what their commuting behaviors will be. We do feel that residents that live here will take advantage of the ferry service, being able to walk there, not have to pay for parking, and be able to walk to the ferry service. But they also have that opportunity, whether it be to take bus or drive to commuter rail. But we did not take credit for people that would be working from home, which is why we assumed a much larger percentage of people would be driving on a daily basis. We assumed a slightly smaller percentage would be taking transit. And we even took into consideration the portion of people that might decide to take commuter rail. The ferry might not go to the best destination for somebody working in downtown Boston. The commuter rail might provide other destinations that people that would live here might take, and those would be auto trips that would go to the commuter rail station. But overall, we are taking conservative approaches to estimating trip generation. I apologize for the giant table, a lot of numbers in it, but what I wanted to do is also compare the number of trips. Usually what we do is we really focus in on one-hour periods during the weekday morning and evening peak, which is the busiest time period for the roadways along here, and that Saturday midday period for the one hour. In the prior proposal, that was about 250 units, we were generating about 100 to 125 trips per hour, which is about two vehicle trips per minute. The current proposal, which is about 60 units smaller, has reduced those peak-hour traffic loads by about 20 to 25%. We're currently generating about 78 vehicle trips in the morning. And one thing I'll note, too, is that this 78 is both in and out. So in the morning, a majority of the vehicles are coming out, when most vehicles are actually probably coming into this area to get to the MBTA boat lot. In the evening, there's about 99 vehicle trips during the one-hour period, and a majority of those are coming into this area when most vehicles are actually exiting the MBTA lot. So we have a reverse commute that I think is pretty complimentary to the uses out here. On Saturday, it's about just shy of 100 trips per hour, and those are fairly balanced. And that's typical of what we see on a Saturday, about half in or half out during that time period. But overall, a reduction. Now, the shipyard itself is what we'll call a closed system, so there's only a limited number of ways in and a limited number of ways out, which is great, because there's been quite a lot of traffic work that's been done over here since 2002 that allows us to evaluate how many people come in in this area on an hourly basis and how many people are leaving. And this is, I have a series of graphs, one for the morning, one for the evening, and one Saturday. This is the weekday morning, one-hour period. In 2002, I think we actually have it labeled 2003, when the report was published for the Shipyard One, this is the traffic study that was completed for that. There were only about 745 vehicles going into this zone and exiting that zone during that time period. The report, the projections that were assumed for full buildout of Shipyard One assume that these volumes would double. And that's basically what the infrastructure was built for, and this is why it was mitigated, to accommodate this level of an increase in flows. In 2014, the proponent for Shipyard One had to come back and do a traffic monitoring analysis. They took a look at how much traffic was actually being generated today. At the time, the Shipyard One was about 84% of its buildup capacity, so not completely occupied versus its full projection, but fairly close to its full buildout level. And you could see a substantial reduction, the third line, it's about 500 fewer trips than was actually projected several years before. Once again, this is what this roadway was built for, what it was mitigated for, and shows you the vast number of conservative assumptions that we typically take when we do a traffic study to make sure that we're on the right side of what these volumes could be in the future. Our traffic counts in 2016 show that things changed very little. Volumes have remained flat in the last couple of years. We're still well below the full buildout projection. And the final line on the right is our projections with assuming the 84% buildout. The red line would be if the other remaining 16% of Shipyard One were to be occupied and constructed, how much more traffic that would add? There would be another 155 cars an hour. And then our project is the green line, which brings us up still below the original buildout projection. We're still projected, even with our project that was never even thought of, we're about 13% lower in total vehicle trips entering and exiting the shipyard during the morning peak hour. So this is the PM evening peak. We're still about 11% lower than the full projections for this area. And on a Saturday, we're looking at about a 17% reduction from overall what was projected and what was really assumed was going to happen out here. Meanwhile, we also have quite a bit of data on Route 3A, so we can take a look at historic volumes to see what happened on Route 3A on the main line adjacent to the site, so this is directly in front of the building. Back in 2002, the volumes were about 2,500 cars an hour in both directions on Route 3A. And the red bar is 2013 volumes, and the green bar is 2016. And what we could see is we're seeing that volumes are trending down. Traffic volumes have actually decreased by about 1% per year over this 12- or 14-year period. And this is something that we have seen a lot in recent years throughout the state, but this is a decline on Saturday. Things are fairly flat. It's hard to say whether things have increased, but I'd say that things are pretty leveled off. To provide a conservative assessment for our traffic study, we typically assume a growth rate. We assume 1% per year over a seven-year period for our full buildout projection, in the event that there is additional traffic that is generated, or if these trends were to reverse. But the key points here are that the shipyard currently today is not generating its full potential of what was envisioned, and the traffic conditions have actually decreased. And they've actually decreased by even more than 1% per year because of the weather. And they've actually decreased by even more than one percent per year because the blue lines actually were before any of the retail development was constructed. And so now that that is built, it actually represents that there's been a substantial decrease in background traffic volume along that corridor. These series of bars take a look at each of the nine intersection locations. I realize it's impossible to read the text on the bottom, but for example, the three bars on the left are Route 3A at Esington Drive at Lincoln Plaza, and then each of the other locations. And these series of bars compare traffic volumes during the morning, the evening, and the Saturday peak periods at all of our locations along Route 3A. And the blue bars represent our background traffic growth. Once again, that very conservative assumption of one percent per year for seven years, plus any other development projects that we have identified, working with the town's planning department. And the yellow lines represent the increase in traffic that our project would have. For the most part, our traffic is only going to yield about a one-to-three percent increase in traffic volumes along the Route 3A corridor. To put that in perspective, Route 3A carries about twenty-five-hundred vehicles per hour. We're generating about seventy-eight vehicles per hour. So that's why it's such a small percentage, a very small impact on the overall network. Where you start to see some higher increases, which are typical, are your Route 3A at Amesbury. It's about two-to-three percent total increase of total traffic goes through that intersection. And then meanwhile, the Shipyard Drive East, the Esington driveway that's next to the MBTA lot, we're looking at about a five-to-nine percent increase. But once again, we expect larger increases as we get closer to our driveways. This table, what I want to focus on, this is each of the intersections and the level of service, which is a letter grade that we give to an intersection to understand how it's operating versus its capacity. I don't want to go through every line in here, but what I did try to highlight is locations that are green are locations where we actually see an improvement from the mitigation package that we're presenting. And the pinkish-red boxes are actually where we do see a decrease in the letter grade or the level of service at these locations. For the most part, we're seeing that operations are fairly good along the Route 3A corridor. Generally, level of service B or C, which is a very good level of service along the corridor. However, there are individual approaches that are operating worse. The one thing that we did note during our field observations is that along the Route 3A corridor, there is a coordinated traffic system that is not functioning properly. We believe that there's a malfunction in the equipment at the Sergeant William B. Terry Drive intersection, and so the corridor is not operating coordinated, which means that when you get a green light on Route 3A, you don't get good progression. You're very likely to hit a red light by the time you get to the next intersection. So while we see localized operations are fairly good, LOSB or LOSC, you don't get good time travel through the corridor itself, because you're likely to hit red lights along the corridor. The one location that has the most operational problems is Route 3A at Downer Ave. and Thaxter Ave. and Lincoln Street, which I'll talk a little bit more about later. Overall, we've developed a fairly comprehensive mitigation package, even though we have a very small impact on actual operations out here. Our goal here was to really address current safety issues and operational deficiencies that we saw throughout the study area. So the one that I had mentioned, locations one, two, three, and four, these are the four signalized intersections along Route 3A where there is a malfunction in the equipment, and for whatever reason, these intersections are no longer operating in coordination. The proponent has agreed to either repair or replace the master controller at location two, which really tells these signals how to talk to each other. We will work with DOT to replace that equipment and retime this corridor to get the coordination and progression back online. At intersection four, pardon me, we're looking at, which is Bradley Woods Drive, we're looking at some restriping, which I have another image that zooms in on this, and taking a look at some accessibility and other safety improvements. And like I said, I have a plan that zooms in at that location. At intersection five, which I'll talk about a little bit more, Downer Ave. at Thaxter Street, there is a safety concern at this location. The proponent has agreed to fund the facilitation of a road safety audit, which would be the first step towards implementing any improvements to what we consider a high-crash location for a Mastod owned traffic signal. Meanwhile, we are looking at some improvements to the internal intersection on Shipyard Drive East near the MBTA parking lot. I have an image for that, as well as the U.S. Amesbury Drive, right turn island, which I mentioned before, which we'll take a look at. And we're also taking a look at some geometric and safety improvements at Fattler Road and Beale Street. So Shipyard Drive at HMS Esington Drive, this is, the project site is located in the back, behind the trees, behind the daycare. To the right of the page is towards Route 3A, and to the left is towards the boat. The observation that we've made out here today, that we've made out here is that at the eastbound approach, there are currently two lanes. One is a left-turn-through lane, and there's a dedicated right-turn lane. However, there is this short section that functions as a second right-turn lane. And we've gone out there, we've evaluated flows during the peak periods. The biggest concern is during the evening. When the boat gets off, there's about a ten, fifteen-minute period that's very intense, where people get back to their cars, they're exiting out, and they're trying to get out through this right-turn lane. However, the capacity of this intersection is truly limited by the traffic signal at Route 3A. Whether there's one lane or six lanes here, it's constrained by the traffic signal. Generally, what we've observed out here is it often takes multiple cycles, so multiple green lights to come out for this to empty out. But during lower-volume flows, what we see is that the left turnmost right-turn lane, which only has a capacity to hold about two vehicles, is not well utilized. There are some times, and we've heard some comments in the last couple of days, about where we have seen some significant stacking. I was just out there this evening. We did not see the significant stacking, which I believe we had heard reported from last night. We'd like to learn a little bit more about those conditions that happened out there. But meanwhile, we do have a very long crossing. It's about eighty-five feet long, crosswalk, somewhat odd geometry. The conditions of the crosswalks and the ramps are not in very good shape. In our traffic study, and then in our more recent technical memorandum that we submitted just a couple of weeks ago, we've looked at the possibility of expanding the existing island, which from what we could tell is getting probably hit by plows. The signs look like they've been replaced multiple times. It's a very small island, and much smaller than what we would typically build these days because it's so hard to see. But what we would like to try to do is expand the width of that island by eliminating one of the right-turn lanes, so that we can create a stage crossing, reduce that eighty-five-foot-long crossing so that pedestrian conditions are enhanced the other twenty-three hours of the day, seven days a week, so we could try to facilitate and encourage pedestrian activity along this corridor. In addition, we will look at restriping and enhancing the crosswalks, reconstructing them where repair is needed, and improving the accessible ramps, some of which don't meet current accessibility standards. Meanwhile, down at Route 3A at Lincoln Street, the U.S. Amesbury Drive, we heard quite a few comments about the inadequacy of the current right-turn island. It is fairly small. Our observations and counts that we've conducted out there have indicated that there are some vehicles out there. It's more of the minority of the vehicles that are doing this, but they are not observing the current left-turn restrictions that are out there. We have observed several vehicles going around the island. We'd originally proposed just to enhance the stripings around it. However, we've come back with a much larger island. This is about three times the size of the current island that's out there. And we also want to reinforce the signage, the sign that's out there today is twisted and bent. We want to straighten it out, put a new sign, and reinforce it with a second no-left-turn sign, and really improve the pavement markings out there so that it's much more difficult and much more obvious for a driver that they shouldn't be taking a left turn at this location. Meanwhile, there is some sight distance limitations to the east of the driveway. From what we have seen, the current travel speeds along the corridor do exceed the speed limit. If vehicles were all going the speed limit, we would actually have enough sight distance. However, we would like to go out just on the northeast corner of the intersection, where we'd be working with probably MastDOT to clear out any overgrown vegetation along that corner of the roadway to improve those sight lines. We had also heard a comment at the last zoning board hearing about the condition of the sidewalk along Lincoln Street between Amesbury Drive and Bradley Woods Drive. There is quite a bit of debris buildup that we've seen on the sidewalk, overgrown vegetation. We've agreed to coordinate with MastDOT to trim back that overgrown vegetation, clean the sidewalk off, and then repair any places that need it as necessary. Moving down the road to Bradley Woods Drive at Fattler Road, this location overall generally operates at a good level of service. However, we are fully aware that the northbound approach does not have a dedicated left-turn phase. We look very hard at solutions to try to resolve this issue. However, we don't have adequate right-of-way to put in a left-turn lane that's truly needed at this location to provide that safe left turn. This approach actually operates at a very poor level of service. However, we are taking a look at, as I noted, re-coordinating this corridor. This signal is actually part of that coordinated system that's no longer operating coordination. So we want to get the signal back online with the coordinated system, and we would be looking at traffic signal timing improvements to this location to at least optimize the phasing that we have out there today. We are looking at restriping the northbound approach of Fattler Road to two lanes. We're currently showing is a dedicated left-through and a dedicated right-turn lane. We had received some comments just in the last couple of days about whether we could reverse that lane usage and do a dedicated left with a shared-through right. We'll continue to work on the best solutions as we advance with MastDOT. We would have to go through a design review process, and at that time, we could finalize what the best lane usage would be for this location. We'd also be looking to repair the accessible ramps at this, each of the crossings, restripe the crossings, and then install countdown signal indications so that you can actually tell how many seconds you have to cross the street, and it's easier to tell whether I can safely cross. Moving down to Beale Street at Fattler Road, currently an unsignalized intersection, similar to Amesbury Drive, we noted a sight line deficiency just southeast of the intersection, where it's very difficult to see oncoming cars coming around the corner when you're waiting at the Fattler Road stop line. There were several other improvements that have been made over the years, the introduction of a median, which can help slow speeds, but we want to take it a step further because we are still seeing that speeds are exceeding the speed limit to a point where the sight distances are concerned. We're proposing to stall digital radar feedback signs, so we would reinforce the speed limit sign thirty miles an hour. But then you also put a sign in under it that would record the speeds and would alert drivers when they're exceeding the speed limit. These signs have the ability to record traffic volume and speeds by time of day, which could then be passed off to law enforcement, so that they could do targeted enforcement, rather than having a police car out there twenty-four-seven, which isn't practical. We can understand when the violations are happening. But the largest improvement that we're proposing is to actually pull the Fattler Road stop bar about nine feet closer to the roadway and extend these landscape islands further to protect the stop line. By pulling that stop line out, we believe that we can increase the sight distance around that corner to the point where you can actually enter the intersection safely and be in a much better position to judge a safe gap in the passing traffic stream. Finally, the intersection of Lincoln at Downer and Thaxter. This is at the eastern limits of our project area. This intersection is currently classified by Mastod, Massachusetts Department of Transportation, as what we consider a top-crash location, indicating that it falls within the top five percent of all crash locations within this region. So it's a high-crash location. The crash rate is more than double the district average. Meanwhile, the project is only going to increase traffic volumes by about one percent. To make any real improvements on what we consider a high-crash location, what MastDOT calls a road safety audit, would be required before any improvements are made to such a location. The road safety audit is a new safety process that MastDOT has taken for a lot of their projects, where we get a multidisciplinary team that includes engineering, town, public safety officials, this would be police, fire, planning officials, regional planning officials in MastDOT to take a look at, a much more in-depth look at safety conditions, what the crash history is at this location, and really develop a strategy, short-term or long-term, of how to remediate the current safety deficiencies. And with that, I think I'm handing it back to Michael.
Joe, before you leave, can you go back to that study area of, I think it's three and eight on Essington?
Is this what I'm saying?
Yeah, right. But I think you had, where you showed the elimination of the right turn, of one of the right turns.
Oh, yes.
Great. So just so, I want to make sure I understand the proposal. Right now, Essington is two lanes. Is the proposal, it's going to be two lanes, but then up at this intersection will become one lane to make the right?
So the second right-turn lane currently only exists right in this area, and it has storage for about one to two vehicles.
Right, but Essington itself is two lanes going in that direction.
Correct. We would maintain two lanes of eastbound traffic on Essington. We are simply looking to reduce this section. Currently, curb-to-curb, it's about twenty-eight feet wide. We take that down to about twenty feet.
So as drivers are going, it's going to be two lanes going to one and then going back to three? Is that what you're proposing?
Correct. So there would be a single right-turn lane.
But, well, there's two lanes going in that direction.
We would retain the left-turn-through lane that's currently there today.
Yeah.
And there would be a single right-turn lane that would, you're correct, that there are currently three receiving lanes for that right-turn lane.
Right, but so anyone who's traveling, I guess that's south on Essington, if they were planning on making a right, they would need to merge over into the one lane that would be going right?
Correct.
So you'd have two lanes of traffic merging to one and then going back to three?
Correct.
Is that something that you think is feasible?
So what happens out here today is that the boat gets out, people get in their cars, everybody's pouring out of the, there's multiple access points from that parking lot. There's probably about ten different access points where people can get into that roadway. And what we're seeing is that a lot of these vehicles, in some cases, are blocking westbound or northbound traffic flow along Essington Drive, and we do see emerging condition that's happening along these two lanes today. Because the reality is, is you can only get into that right-turn lane by merging in right near the stop bar. What we do see also is that while you are saying that there are three lanes there, everything is really limited by the traffic signal. So the traffic signal, when that's red, these three lanes stack up, predominantly, most vehicles that we see are trying to get in the left, well, I guess on the right-hand side, the left-turn lanes, most vehicles are turning left at the intersection. And so we see that the queuing is going to happen regardless of whether there's one lane, or two lanes, or four lanes at this location, because all the flow is controlled by the traffic signal. And that's potentially something that we could look at the timing, to see if there's a way to increase the max green during the PM peak period, to see if we could try to process a few more vehicles. We took quite a detailed approach at the fifteen-minute volumes along this corridor over a multi-day period, and what we're seeing is there's about a ten, fifteen-minute period where about a hundred cars come out. So the boat gets off, about a hundred cars come out of there, and it's typically processed in about a ten-minute time. Ten-minute time period, maybe even as little as seven minutes. So we're only looking at about ten to twelve cars a minute that have to get through there. We have heard reports, we saw a picture yesterday of some extensive queuing along that corridor. However, we have not observed that condition ourselves, being out there multiple times. So I think there are some time periods where you can have extreme queuing that does happen out there, but it's very momentary. And it seems to be isolated to that fifteen-minute window of time each time one of these larger boats arrives and dumps off. So I think there's probably about three or four max boatloads that come off that create this condition for a very short time period. I think that while we do recognize there's a slight reduction of capacity directly at the right-turn lane, we do feel that overall it's limited by the traffic signal. And what we want to do is wait the benefit of creating an all-day-long enhanced pedestrian connection across this location, which we feel is not necessarily a great condition. It's an eighty-five-foot-long crosswalk with no protection, and you're going across multiple lanes of traffic to get there. I think that we've tried to really take a good look at the pedestrian network that we have out there. We would like to try to encourage the residents of the project to take advantage of the convenient location and take advantage of the amenities that are out there by providing this enhanced connection. We've made a lot of considerations about other alignments to the crosswalk conditions. However, it's complicated by the number of driveways on the north side, so we can't simply shift it to the north side. The crosswalk really does belong on the south side of the intersection.
Have you looked at the safety issues that if, in fact, it's basically only one lane that's going to be able to make that right, and cars are queued back, the impact that it would have, let's say, on the parking lot as far back as Fresh Market, where that will be blocked by the longer queue?
What we have observed out there now is that... What we have observed out there now is that the queue does extend along Essington Drive to the north. However, there is queuing that also extends into the parking lot. And I think that regardless of the solution for this location, there will continue to be queuing that extends into the parking lot.
Do you know if the observations that you're making today in March slash April are consistent for the summer? In other words, I don't know if the MBTA has looked at how many people take the boat in the summer versus in the winter, but is, are the observations you're making accurate for the summer as well?
I, I think that for a commuter facility such as this lot, I think that we are probably seeing a typical condition. If anything, in the summer, you might have more people that are not commuting on a weekday, whether they're on vacation or away. And I think that we're probably actually seeing probably the peak activity of what would be happening for a commuter lot.
I can see people going to the, you know, going straight and taking a right around the other side of the island.
Excuse me, Joe. Do you mind if I ask a question? Would it be possible to get this graphic but put the right-of-way lines on there? Because Shipyard Drive is wide, obviously, where it's approaching light.
Mm-hmm.
But then it's narrowed when you go straight ahead, and Essington Drive is actually owned by the MBTA. It's not a public way. So it would be helpful for me to understand the legal boundaries of what's the public right-of-way and what's private property, because that plays into the rights of the town end or private party to make modifications if it's on the private property and not in the public way. So it would just be helpful for me and the board, obviously, to understand where the legal ownership lines are on that design. Does that make sense?
I'd actually be happy, we have them on here, and I'd be happy to point them out, our understanding of what they are.
Oh, and maybe it's just too light. I don't see them?
Yeah, we, we drew back the lines a little bit because we're trying to
Okay.
really clarify. So there's a line here that cuts through the middle of the crosswalk. It's just hard to see because it goes over the red.
Okay.
And it goes around the corner. So this radius and line and everything south of it is the Bright Horizons property.
Okay.
This line cuts up, and this is a private driveway that would, is shared easement with Bright Horizons and would provide that access to our site. This is the right-of-way line that actually jogs over and comes up right here.
Oh, okay.
And so on the left side, on the top and left side of this line is MBTA. So over here, this zone, all of HMS Essington Drive is MBTA-adjacent to the MBTA lot. And the town right-of-way, to our understanding, jogs over and then cuts up along Shipyard Drive East.
Okay, so modifications to that intersection, to the extent they're on the Essington drive line, is that require consent of the MBTA to make those modifications?
It would.
It would?
Correct.
So to go from two to one would require?
To increase the size of the island.
Correct. Yeah, it's MBTA right-of-way, and it would require coordination with them.
And I appreciate this is a challenging location because you don't and we don't control that parking lot, but that parking lot, the T parking lot is, is clearly, has a significant impact. It's not as if we can direct traffic to go a different way. We just don't control that. So I appreciate the challenge that you face here.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Next up, we have Steve Schwartz, who will review our updated waivers list.
Good evening, I'm Steve Schwartz, Ghostin Stores. Can you hear me okay?
Can you hear out there?
So as a result of the changes to the plan, as well as some feedback we received from the Board's Council and the zoning administrator, we were able to revise the waiver list from what was originally submitted. And actually, the line items for the waivers have been cut basically in half, and we'll go through those just generally and happy to answer any questions about the specifics of the waivers that the board may have. So the first waiver is obviously the use waiver. This is in the industrial district. Multifamily uses are not allowed, so we need a waiver for that. There's also a provision of the bylaw, which is Section 4, Roman 4E, which talks about multifamily uses and certain dimensional requirements that are applicable in, for multifamily uses in multifamily districts. At the urging of, we had originally submitted some detail on that in our waiver list. At the urging of the zoning administrator and the Board's Council, we've sort of asked for a blanket waiver for those provisions, but happy to get into as much detail as the board would like. So that's really the first waiver. The second waiver is related to frontage. There's a two-hundred-foot frontage requirement, as has been shown through the various site plan slides. It's basically a split lot in that sense because there's that lot that's not owned by us that's in the middle. So in combination, you actually meet the two-hundred-foot frontage, but taken individually, you have less than the two-hundred feet of frontage. The next, the next waiver that's required is with regard to height, specifically, there's a story requirement. And I should mention in passing, by the way, that the, I think it was a helpful suggestion of the, of the Board's Council and zoning administrator was to add a column to our waiver request of what exists on the site today, specifically with the Building Nineteen building on site. So you'll see, actually, there's some improvements in that situation in a couple of instances. As it relates to height, the requirement, the maximum story requirement is three stories. There's an existing two-story building there, which is in compliance, and we are, we're proposing a five-story, a five-story structure with the podium and the four stories of residential. Building coverage, this is one that's actually been reduced from the original plan as a result of the changes to the plan. The maximum allowed in the industrial districts is forty percent. The existing lot coverage, building coverage is forty-nine percent, and as you can see, we're requesting a little over a sixty-four percent lot coverage with our new plan. Floor area ratio, it's point-three-five on an asset-right basis. By special permit in the industrial district, you're permitted to have a point-five FAR. The existing FAR is just under one, and our proposed FAR is a little over one and a half. Side yard, there's twenty-five-foot side yard requirement, very minimal side yard provided with, with the existing Building Nineteen building, and we're actually improving that for a sixteen-foot side yard. So, and I think you saw that on one of the slides that Ed showed earlier. There is a, a special requirement to the dimensional requirements that prohibits a building within a hundred feet of a residential district. This is a residential project, so that was really intended for an industrial building in an industrial district. But nevertheless, it applies to us because we are in an industrial district, so we need that waiver because we're only about eighty feet from the nearest residential district. With regard to parking, as has been discussed, the requirement in the bylaw is two spaces per unit for residential uses, which is really the, the most applicable one. Even though this is in the industrial district, it's not really helpful to look at what the industrial use parking requirement is, and we're proposing a, under, just under one-point-six spaces per unit. We also have the ratio for a gross floor area, which again is the more commercial measure for the, for the Board's information. Size of parking spaces, standard size for these projects is nine by eighteen. There's a twenty-foot requirement in the bylaw for spaces without an overhang, which, which aren't present here, so we're requesting a waiver there. Loading spaces, very often for residential uses in residential districts, there, there are no loading requirements. There is a loading requirement because we're in the industrial district with, specifically with regard to the clearance of, of the loading area, and we're proposing ten rather than the fourteen that's required, which is adequate, more than adequate for this type of residential use. And so we have a total of, as I said before, going from probably about twenty or a little over to ten specific waivers that we're requiring and happy to answer any questions about.
And at this point, I don't see any waiver requests with respect to signage or lighting.
We'll take a close, the lighting plan is not yet finalized, so once we have that, we will, we'll measure that against what the requirements are. With regard to signage, I'm not aware of any waivers that are required, but we'll take another look at that.
Great. Thank you, Steve. So just in conclusion, just to kind of step back, we appreciate all the work and revised information that was presented. Just to talk about process, I mean, we, we appreciate and respect the process, and as, as you've seen, we've made changes. We've made big changes. We've made some smaller changes. They're all important, and I think, you know, we feel they've all made, made this a better proposal. And what we're talking about here is housing. At the shipyard, a hundred-and-thirty-acre redevelopment of a, of a site that has, has a great history, that is now a transit-oriented, a site for transit-oriented development. And so, and it serves a housing need, as we had discussed in a prior presentation. Renters by choice, a lot of households in transition, folks who have lived with us and moved on to Hewitt Landing, to other places within Hingham, people who have lived with us between homes, and also, just from a demographic standpoint, people who are empty nesters, retired, and families. From an affordable standpoint, you know, that's another big part of this, this proposal. Twenty-five percent of the apartments will be designated as affordable, which we have found serves the need of, of really a wide spectrum of residents, including senior citizens as well. It was interesting, just as an aside, I was just at a industry meeting, and as it relates to housing, it's, the baby boomers are the second-largest generation now. The millennials are the largest. But the baby boomers are in transition, and they're becoming empty nesters. They're retiring. And as a generation, they are renting more than any generation at that age before them. And so, and kind of stepping back, it's, it's an interesting dynamic. We think this, this housing proposal fits a need, and for a lot of reasons, is a good location for what we're proposing. Just quickly, our last slide, project benefits. Obviously, we're redeveloping the, the existing Building Nineteen site. It'll be about a sixty-million-dollar investment in the town of Hingham. All one-hundred-and-ninety apartments will count toward the subsidized housing inventory under Chapter Forty-B. There are initial benefits with building permit fees, inflow, infiltration fees, traffic mitigation, infrastructure upgrades. We're proposing supporting the Bradley Woods Playground, supporting the Shipyard Memorial. And then from an ongoing perspective, annual property taxes in excess of three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars a year, and annual maintenance and service contracts in excess of three-hundred-thousand dollars a year. So with that, again, we appreciate your time and letting us kind of go through some of the details here. And at this point, we're happy to address any questions that you may have.
Thank you, and I know that you've had a chance to provide these materials in advance so that they could be peer-reviewed by the town's consultants. And unless Robin or Mario wanted to jump in now, I was going to have them respond.
Can you just ask one quick question about your last slide? Can you verify the INI fees that you specify up there? Those are related to sewer permit fees?
They're normally associated with the building permit fees, but it's basically the, I think it's four to one in the town of Hingham.
Is it for water or for sewer? Water or sewer?
It's for sewer.
Okay, those are, those are.
This is separate from system upgrade?
Yes, I suggest you talk to the sewer department.
Yep.
Because I, I asked them for that estimated number last week, and it was much different from your number. So I, I think you should factor that in when you're looking at your various numbers and maybe find that out tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Emily, would you coordinate calling up the, our consultants?
Our experts, yes. So can I invite Pat Brennan up first to review his latest findings? I'm just going to get the light.
Pat Brennan with Amory Engineers. I reviewed the site civil engineering aspects of the project. Back on March tenth, I presented my comments on the original application. I would like to say that in this application, they've addressed the majority of my comments as they refer to the site civil aspects. With that submission, they, they submitted a response letter to my comments, and there's just a couple of the items in that response letter where, at some point, the board's going to need some additional information, and they've said that they would provide that, but I just want to highlight those few issues. One of them was pertaining to a retaining wall design. They said they would have a structural engineer do that, which is required by code. I'm just suggesting that if, if they don't have a structural design prior to the close of the public hearing and the board does approve the project, that that should be a condition of approval.
Yep.
The next comment was about Mass Housing Eligibility Letter had recommended the playground, if possible, and if not, a program identified for children. In their response letter, they said that they're looking into that further, so I just want to make sure that's still on the table, that they maintain that. Getting into the stormwater system, as Mr. Latini had said, they're doing that subsurface infiltration system. Without that system, they would be increasing flows into that twenty-four-inch drain line in USS Amesbury Drive. So that system is critical to the operation of this stormwater system. It's located underneath the pavement, underneath the parking garage. We'll call it the podium parking garage. So maintenance of that system is very critical. They do have it included in their operation and maintenance plan, but it's just something that I really want to highlight, because if that system fails with it being located under the garage, it's going to be a difficult system to replace or repair. So I just want to highlight that. The, the next is, they said, they do, on the previous plan, they didn't have any proposed fire hydrants. They do show one. It's at the intersection of the visitor parking in USS Amesbury Drive. They did say that they would work further with the fire department to make sure that if additional, if the fire department requires additional hydrants, that they would work with them to locate those. The next one is in regards to lighting. They, we were asking them for photometric plan for any exterior lighting to make sure that there's no spill over on two adjacent properties, and they said that they, they will provide that during the comprehensive permit process. Again, hopefully, they can provide that prior to closing, but if not, I suggest that that would be a condition of approval as well. And the, the last one, which isn't as big of an issue, is snow storage areas. The only place where they really would have any snow removal activities is the visitor parking lot. They've identified a couple of small areas adjacent to that where they would have snow storage. But they also said that the applicant intends to remove snow from the site during large storm events. Again, if the project is approved, I suggest that that would be a condition of approval. Aside from that, I'm satisfied with the site civil aspects of the project at this time.
Have you looked at the implications on stormwater if snow stays, if it's not removed for some period of time? Is that going to have a negative impact?
No, that would not have a negative impact. Snow, actually, snow melt is so much less of an intense event as a rainstorm. It really has no impact on the stormwater system.
Thank you. Anyone? Mario or Rob? Great. Thank you.
And Jeffrey Dirk, our traffic period view engineer.
Would you mind putting up the site plan first? I think that'd be helpful, if you wouldn't mind. Any, any site plan that, that suits you?
Up, two and a go. I think he just passed. I think you just passed.
Site plan.
Did you want the one with the traffic or?
Any site plan that you've got for the current site plan? Now, that's, any of those is, any of those is fine.
I'm gonna get to slide four.
This is Mike's favorite one.
Might as well start our introduction while we're, while we're getting to that. So for the record, my name is Jeffrey Dirk, principal with the Vanesson Associates, and we're the town's review consultant relative to traffic.
So I'm gonna stop you. This is the one slide that's the least readable.
Yeah.
Maybe you can, you can, you can find another one that. Have your counsel find it. I'll stick with the waivers.
All right. Just tell me when to stop. I apologize.
So we've submitted two review, that's fine. We've submitted, we've submitted two, two review letters to you. The first one was on March 10th, looking at the original traffic study for the project, and then we've since submitted a letter dated April 4th. We received a submission last week that we've had a chance to review as well. We had several comments as a part of our initial review, most of them dealing with the mitigation program and refinements to it, and those comments have been addressed based on some of the changes you've seen here tonight as well. There was only one real mechanical issue relative to the traffic study that we really had asked them to verify, and they've since done that, and that dealt with the traffic volumes and how they develop some of their, the network analysis that they've done. And so they've submitted the information to us so that we can verify that the base conditions were done appropriately, so we've since resolved any technical issues relative to the traffic study. So again, the comments really that we were asking them to address in this next round were really with some refinements of the mitigation program. What you saw tonight in terms of the presentation of those mitigation elements, those addressed the comments that we had with some additional signing, the increase in the island area at USS Amesbury Drive, and Route 3A in this area here, so they've expanded it island to address some of the comments that we have. Now, of course, the new site plan had some additional elements, so we had asked them to make sure that when they submitted that to us, review that they checked all of the truck turning radii and such as well, so that was provided as a part of the package. And one of the things that happens is the site plan and the architect had gone through it before, the shrinking of the building and kind of the poles and tugs that have happened. What that's done from a traffic circulation standpoint is it's freed up some circulation space, and most important is on the back here, which, as you see the way the garage is focused, this is the primary access where the majority of the traffic they're talking about is gonna interact with the roadway network. It is a driveway, so the traffic that's here is primarily their traffic, but instead of being a 24, 20-foot wide drive aisle, now we have a 24-foot wide drive aisle. So as we look at the circulation that happens, it's freed up circulation, it makes the maneuvers much easier to happen, both from their standpoint of where the loading is gonna take place here, but as well as just the fire truck getting around the building. And we know from the standpoint of the snow activity that we talked about, the snow plowing, this gives us some more room to have snow storage in the back there, just the general windrows that you'd have as the plow happens, and still have two-way circulation. So we think it, it provides some significant benefit in terms of that additional space that's there. Some of the comments that we have in our review letter really does deal with the fact that now we've got a wider drive aisle here. As was mentioned, we have this pedestrian interaction that's happening with an introduction of the sidewalk here, we have a crossing that's happening here, and then the sidewalk continuing along this side, which we think is appropriate, given the fact that, similar to what we were talking about down on Shipyard Drive and Essington Drive, and where the MBTA parking lot is, all of those driveways, we want to minimize pedestrian interaction, so we don't want the pedestrians crossing all of these access points of the property. We'd rather have it happen on this area here. Because this is a long straight of way, what we suggested to them is that this crossing, more than likely should be a raised crossing, just to slow the travel speeds down in this area here. They proposed a raised crosswalk at this location here. We've suggested that that probably is not appropriate approaching the intersection, just given the fact that you've gotta stop and then you're gonna rise up over a bump. It just creates a very awkward situation for the movement of vehicles at that location. So in lieu of doing that, we've suggested that somewhere probably in this location here, that they may want to look at a speed hump wherever it's appropriate there, so that you still provide two types of traffic calming, and that does a couple of things. As I mentioned, what we're trying to do is achieve slow travel speeds, but because we have all of these access points, we also want to have slow traffic, so as their, as vehicles are approaching these driveways and someone may be exiting, they're doing that at a slow speed, so it creates a nice slow speed environment for not only the pedestrian interactions, but also the exiting from the garage here as well.
Where is the closest exit to the garage with respect to that crosswalk? Yes.
So the crosswalk is, I believe, at this location here, so you've got a driveway exit here. This, what you see here, is actually where the loading zone or where the moving vehicles were staged, and then we've got another exit, I believe, in this location here.
Are you comfortable with that from a safety perspective?
From a safety standpoint, it provides adequate separation to the vehicles, and again, the whole thing of the slow speed environment, there should be sufficient sightlines to the crossings there. But we do feel introducing that raised, a speed hump in this area here would be appropriate as well, just to kind of repeat that, the reinforcement of the slow travel speeds as you're going along the driveway. The other thing we've recommended is that at this location here, this, this is a new introduction here in terms of this cross connection, which needs to be provided to these other properties here. We also know that there's an access to 3A, I think down in this area here, or somewhere along this corridor. So what we've requested is that this, the treatment of this driveway or this segment of the driveway here, again, we would suggest that some type of traffic calming be introduced or something, if nothing else, some stamped asphalt or something. We want to really make sure that this doesn't appear to be kind of a nice connection to get out to Route 3A. So that can be achieved through the landscaping they've got there by creating kind of a narrow corridor there, which we think is appropriate, but that along with some type of pavement treatment to differentiate from the parking area, and make it not seem so much as a cut through or an opportunity to get out to 3A, so we're trying to, we'd suggested that they might want to look at that as a part of an enhancement to the plan as well.
Does that driveway in the back connect to the property out there?
It, it, so this driveway comes, the Bright, the daycare center, the Bright Horizon Center is here, and then it comes out to the intersection that we're focusing on with the double right turn lane area.
Okay, all right. So is there, I'm just curious, is there any projection or estimate of how cars are gonna get out of this property, just given that there's the right-hand turn only out onto 3A?
Right.
If you're coming from Amesbury, I would assume that, you know, people who want to go left are gonna go around the building up to the signal.
Correct, they have, they have to come out this way. So as they were mentioning, in terms of the distribution, I think 60% of it wants to go right, so they have that opportunity to use this location here, but given the fact that you've got most of the driveways focused up at this area here, I think you're gonna have significant portion of the traffic is also gonna want to come out that way.
Right.
And you have the benefit of the signalized intersection there. The left turners will have to do that, they'll all have to come out that way.
Right, because there were concerns at the previous meeting, I think about, you know, people who wanted to go back toward downtown Hingham, having to make a U-turn on 3A.
Correct, right. So I mean, if, so the idea is those left turns are supposed to come out to the signal, and given the way the focus is out onto the back here, that's kind of the quickest way to get out.
Yeah.
And then your right turns, and if there's congestion happening up in this area here, they have the opportunity to come out here and make the turn as well.
Have you made any assumptions about cut-through traffic, people who want to go to the boat, they're coming from Cohasset, they're coming up, and then they, they make a quick right, and then they want to make a left?
Actually, from a travel times perspective, there's no savings to actually do that, coming up to the signal and make the turn in there is actually the quickest way to get there, and that's why we also want to introduce those traffic calming measures here, so that even though we've got the benefit of it added with, we want to try to reduce the possibility of that. I, I think from the standpoint of the way the site's laid out and the fact that you've got the signal and where the parking is for the commuter boat, there's really no advantage in doing it. In fact, if you look at the number of turns you have to make to get there, and then you actually have to cross through that intersection to get to the other side, it's not gonna be a very comfortable travel route versus using the signal and go.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a disadvantage, because they come out here, they'll hit a stop sign, whereas if they go to the traffic light, there's no stops.
Correct, exactly. Can you bring up the, I think, go to the internal intersection where we're focusing in on the, I hate to have to make you do that, but.
Numbers, three, intersections 3 and 8.
Okay. So you want me to keep going?
Uh, yeah, go back to where the improvement plans are? Yeah, go to the, so this, this plan here. So I think we, we spent a fair amount of time looking at this, and I think one of the things I want to point out, and I've seen the photographs of the queuing that takes place, this intersection was never designed to have a double right turn lane, it was never intended. As we looked at the improvements they're doing here, the first thing we want to do is, is address safety. An unsignalized intersection, you cannot have two right turns turning at the same time. You can only do that at a signalized location, and the reason for that is there's significant sight distance issues that happen. So I know people are using this as a double right, and they're squeezing by here, and there's kind of, as you look at that striping, that's non-standard striping, it would not, if we were out on any town road or out on a state highway, you can't do that striping, it's just not permissible. The reason is you can't have this double right turn lane, and I know people are using it like that, but if you imagine, if we look at the pedestrian experience here, so if a pedestrian is trying to cross here, if you've got two lanes turning at this location here, one or both of those lanes are not gonna be able to see the pedestrian because they're blocked by the vehicle that's next to them. The worst-case scenario is when you have the double right turn lane happening, especially at an unsignalized intersection like this. If a vehicle's two lane, two vehicles are turning simultaneously, this vehicle comes up to the stop line, starts going through, if the vehicle on the outside here allows that vehicle to merge in the traffic, this vehicle can't see that vehicle. So it, it just creates a lot of safety issues relative to pedestrians and motor vehicles, and that's why anytime you have the double right turn lane, because of those sight distance issues, it has to be signalized. This location doesn't meet the criteria for signals, you can't do it, it was never intended to have a double right turn lane, and so I know that's the way it's functioning, it's a, it's a safety issue, and it really needs to be eliminated just because of the fact that it, all of those things I just mentioned, it just was never intended for that to happen.
Has there been experience in that in terms of either accidents or traffic problems that you're aware of?
The chief may be able to answer that. I'm not aware of a collision history at this location, but I think as we're introducing more pedestrians and more traffic to this location, we want to address it now. There's, so I think from the standpoint of what they're proposing to do here, we're in agreement with that, that, the second right turn lane needs to go away, it absolutely does. This idea of this pedestrian crossing, in the way that it's designed here, we think it's important. Some of the things that it does do is that right turning vehicles are going around this corner here. If you look at where this crossing is now, the pedestrians are more right in front of you as you're at the location, rather than being at an angle. And so this improves the visibility of the crossing for the motorists that are going around the corner. They've, of course, added the enhanced signs as well. The other thing is the current intersection does not meet accessibility standards. This ramp here is what's known as an apex ramp, so it's a single ramp where pedestrians can come down, or a wheelchair ramp comes down, it can go in either direction. That's been found to be challenging to people who are visually impaired, because they don't know which direction the crossing is going, so now what's required is you need separate ramps for each crossing. So what that means is, we're actually gonna need to break this up from what you see here, and either this crossing will go back a little bit, this crossing will move down a little bit, but you need separate wheelchair ramps for each one of those. The other thing is in terms of the crossing to the island area here, the island as it exists today is not wide enough to have, have it be a pedestrian refuge island, it, again, does not meet accessibility standards, you need ramps on either side, so that island needs to be increased in size, and so that's one of the other things that you see being done here. From the standpoint of how it would function with this configuration here, there probably would need to be some restriping that's done further on, but the intent here is really that as the traffic exits the parking lot, they're supposed to, if they're continuing up to the signalized intersection, which is what the majority wants to do, they are supposed to be in the single lane, it was never intended to be queued as two lanes back here, even though we know that's what's happening. So we think one of the things that can happen, and probably a subject of more discussion, is that the applicant is, was acknowledged to make these improvements, it has to do some communication with the MBTA. We would suggest that some of that communication through direction from the board may be also dealing with ways that improve signing and pavement markings can take place, so that this lot does not all have to empty out in this direction, there's the ability to empty out in the other direction and actually approach the intersection from this direction. And that was actually what we were hoping was going to happen, because if there's going to be queuing coming out to the signal, we'd rather have it be happening in this location here, rather than back along this location here, and if nothing else, to break it up. The other, of course, we have the.
Let me stop you there, because so, the only way to get out of the parking lot from the back, there's one point of exit, whereas along Essington, there's.
There's actually too many. These drive, yeah, there's, there's too many driveways, and in fact, these driveways should really be closed because they're too close to the intersection itself. So what I think we would suggest is that when the applicant does go to the MBTA to talk about what's required for these improvements here, they have a similar discussion about what could be done, and through signs, pavement markings and such, to encourage traffic to exit either out the backside and come into the intersection here, or go to the other signalized intersection and exit out through the roundabout and down to the signal in 3A, just to disperse the traffic. Because what this will do is, it's true that what it will do is kind of, it may force people to use those other routes, because it is gonna create a longer backup, but I think the, the key thing is here not to sacrifice safety. And I think even if this project wasn't happening, and there were issues at this location, this, this is what we would come back to you with, with this design, you cannot have the double right turn lanes at a signal, I'm sorry, in the unsignalized intersection. I know that's what's happening today, but you can't do it, it's a safety issue, even if this project wasn't built. So this project, I would say, has the opportunity to implement these safety improvements. It also has the ability, because they have to do these communications with the MBTA, is to suggest that they take it that step further, and have them look at opportunities to improve circulation relative to the MBTA parking lot.
So if people are exiting the parking lot, and, and so the, the far right lane is, is back, they can only get into the second lane there?
Correct.
So how is it that they're gonna get into that right-hand lane to, to make the right turn? Are they just gonna?
They're gonna have to, they're gonna have to.
They're just gonna have to stop, or it's gonna be.
They're gonna have to wait to get into the lane, yeah, I mean.
Or, or about going straight, and then they're gonna make a right, sort of that illegal right, right into the trap, into the pedestrian area that you're looking to avoid?
So if you look at the location that's here, I mean, even if you were to do that, you're, you're basically talking about a couple of cars. I mean, there's not much distance, if this is backed up to the point that it's wrapped around a corner there, it's probably only a car or two that could get kind of hanging out in this location here. There's really not an advantage in doing that. But I, I think that is, I think one of the key things, again, is that we, when we had originally looked at the overall shipyard development, this was never intended to be a double right turn lane, and I think because of the fact the way people are doing it, there are some hodgepodge pavement markings that are not standard and should not be out there, they don't meet any standards at all. And what we're doing here is bringing the thing, bringing the intersection back up to something that actually complies with standards, it's much safer for vehicles and pedestrians, and the hope would be that through some coordination, we can get the traffic to redistribute itself to the other access points, which is what was intended from the beginning.
Excuse me, Joe and Jeff, sorry to interrupt, but I did have very minimal involvement with what was going on in this intersection a year or so ago, because, for whatever reasons, that stop sign kept being taken out. And it was dangerous, because people who, if they were gonna go straight, for whatever reason, to Bright Horizons or whatever, the stop sign wasn't there anymore, particularly if someone wasn't familiar with that intersection. And that's why now there's two-foot, I think they're sitting on two-foot concrete, those didn't used to be there, and I think it's because, and the chief may know this better, multiple times that, that island is so small, and the stop sign was so close to the driving lane, people that were whipping around too fast were actually taking out that stop sign. So I only know about that, because I ended up being in a couple of conversations with the building commissioner and other town officials because of the problems that were, were happening at that intersection.
There's minimum sizes of the island, so that they don't become traffic safety hazards. This island does not meet the minimum standards. It's supposed to be at least 75 square feet, ideally 100 square feet, this island isn't that size. And those concrete bear, you know, again, looking at all of the substandard features, those are, these are actually traffic hazards. If someone strikes these, these do not yield to the vehicle, so the occupant of the vehicle is going to get hurt if they hit these. They were put there for that reason, but the unintended consequence is that, in fact, it's an obstruction in the travelway, and it shouldn't be there. So these really, these are breakaway posts, but they will never break away, because the vehicle's going to hit the concrete island, the occupant is going to more than likely be hurt, depending on the speed of traffic, and the sign's gonna stay there. That's not what the intent is. The intent is the sign's supposed to go down and be forgiving, and this is not a forgiving design. So the island really needs to be increased in size, as was proposed, this lane needs to go away, those concrete bollards need to be removed, and we need to get to something that's a safe intersection. It's not designed properly, there's a number of features that violate safety standards that just need to go away. The plan they're proposing does that, it gets rid of a lot of these elements, brings it back to the way it should be, creates a much safer intersection. So we think it's heading in the right direction. We understand the congestion, and we think that, again, because the applicant has got to go have these consultations with the MBTA, this is a good time to try to address all of that at the same time. Couple of the other intersection improvements that were, that were mentioned, we can actually cycle through some of those. So I think, yeah, that's fine, if you go back to the Fattler Road one, Bradley Woods, one of the things that, that it was, is also being done at this intersection, and I think the, the chief had commented this as, as well before, they're replacing the signal, traffic signal controller at this location, because a lot of these improvements, we agree with that they're doing, but one of the things I think MassDOT has commented on is that the, the physical computer that's out there can't implement these changes, and so I think they're, they're agreeing to replace the computer that controls the intersection, so then, in fact, they can implement these changes and make it more of a modernized operation of the signal. As was mentioned as well, one of the residents, and this is a very good. As was mentioned as well, one of the residents, and this is a very good comment that was, that came up, that Emily had passed along in terms of this lane utilization over here, as you see the kind of, this approach is offset. And so as you look at the lane use here, this through lane actually lines up with the exiting lane from Bradley Woods, so the resident very astutely pointed out the fact that this should probably be a through right because of the misalignment if nothing else there, so we think it was actually a very astute comment that came through, and we agree with that, just given the alignment, that's really what needs to take place there, so I thought that was a very good comment that came through as a part of the project as well. If we go down to the, yeah, that is just fine. So one of the things that you see added to this plan, the signs and markings, these advanced warning signs we had mentioned, and then really the sight distance issue is down in this location here, there's a rock outcropping and some vegetation clearing, I think that they're going to do as a part of the project, so this, we think is a good enhancement to that intersection itself. And then I think the last intersection I want to talk about is just the Thaxter Downer Avenue intersection. As was mentioned, there was a, there was a series of improvements that they had recommended, but we kind of, in our comment letter, we had suggested that you really need to step back and that the state, because it's a high-crash location, this roadway safety audit is something that will be required, and those that may be familiar with it, what it is, basically it's a design charrette, so they invite the chief, the planning department, and residents that may be concerned or interested in this location, you actually go out to the field, and the state sponsors this meeting, MassDOT, and you talk about what's happening there, and then you throw out what you think good improvements would be at that location. It's all documented in a report that gets submitted, the town gets a copy of it, and then what comes out of it is a series of recommendations, and so the applicant has agreed to conduct that roadway safety audit as the first step, and then implement improvements that may come out of that. We think that's a, that's a very good thing, because we know there's some significant safety issues here that need to be addressed, and I think by bringing everyone together is probably the best part to attack kind of what's going on at that location itself. So at this point, there's no outstanding issues relative to the technical aspects of the traffic study, we've, the recommendations that we have really deal with these refinements of the site plans that were mentioned, and we think that those are things that can be dealt with as a part of any conditions that you might have on the project. So be happy to answer any questions you have now or later on.
And we'll continue. Jeff, thank you.
Chief, if I may just make one clarifying comment, Jeff is correct, we did agree to support the road safety audit, and we were certainly willing to implement the solutions that we had recommended initially, but we would need to understand what the recommendations of road safety audit would be before we would be willing to sign on to implementing any of those mitigation, especially given the very de minimis amount of traffic relative to the overall traffic of that intersection that we'd be contributing. So we certainly want to talk about what our fair share is to the, to that intersection above and beyond the cost of doing the road safety audit, just to clarify.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, no, we do have Chief Olson.
Good evening, good evening everybody. Glenn Olson, Hingham Police Chief. I really am at a loss for words here, because my traffic engineers have basically stated it far better than I could ever state it. I will tell you one thing, I've been involved in, in working with the board for the last 15 years. I don't consider myself to the level of the traffic experts that they are. Over the 15 years, I've really come to learn that the data that they present to the people is so documented through studies and time-proven calculations that they tend to be right more often than I am when it comes to predictions. So I really do believe this, and I think we sat down earlier with Avalon, we reviewed a lot of the different plans, we came up basically with a traffic plan that exists around the building now, because we felt that HMS Essington really didn't provide, I mean, excuse me, the entrance there closer to Bradley Woods was a problem. We felt that that Amesbury, and we felt that we really wanted to divert people away from there as much as possible and minimize the traffic coming in and out. The plan that we were able to come up with provides better access going out through HMS Essington, that area was set up for traffic to come in and out, there's turning lanes for right and left-hand turns with a set of traffic lights. I do also agree with them, I know it's, there's probably nothing worse in their life than having to work in Boston all day, take a boat ride home, you want to get home to your family or to your meeting, to a sporting event, the boats drop off, there's many boats there now, more than we had before when the shipyard was first convened, there's all the Quincy boats moved in. I know everybody wants to get home, and there is, for that one-hour period, there is that rush, but that's one hour, and it's basically an inconvenience, and I have to agree with the traffic people here. What my feeling is, is we always have to provide safety, and that safety goes to the pedestrians that are going to be using that access point. Also, we need to conform to what the rules are, and if we're not conforming to the rules, it puts some sort of a liability back on the town, just to let it exist the way it is. So I am supporting the plan to correct the intersection there, and I think working with the MBTA in finding other solutions to divert traffic, because I have seen some of the backup pictures, I think we can move the traffic around, possibly go out the other entrances, there's two other traffic, set of traffic lights that can be used, so I do support their thinking on that. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else from the town, Emily?
I don't see anybody else. Nope.
Yes, I was gonna ask.
Can you go back to the benefits, the project benefits thing, just back to the sewer? I had a question about the sewer and the infiltration. So you have money in for info and infiltration fees, and then there's another bullet that says sewer infrastructure upgrades, does that include this report from Western Sampson regarding the Bradley Woods pump station, they're estimating $290,000 something dollars worth of improvements?
Yep, so that's the, the next, or the third to last bullet point, the sewer infrastructure upgrades. So we're in the middle of reviewing that report to understand what we believe, or what our assessment is of all of the mitigation or improvements that they're describing there, what things we think are genuinely as a result of our project, as opposed to there's also, as they talk about in the report, certain things that are just as a result of the infrastructure is just older. So we're trying to assess, and we're hoping to come back soon with a proposal, what we think is the appropriate portion of that.
All right, thanks Lars.
Sure. Anything else?
That's it.
Members of the public, comments or questions? Yes, sir.
I am Charles Homequest, I live at 7 Juniper Road, I'm one of the abutters, and my first comment is, as the board, the members walk the site, and if not, do you plan to, and will you do it from Bradley Woods, Juniper Road?
So I can answer that personally, I have walked the site, driven the site, but not, I have not gone off the site into Bradley Woods.
Yeah, I invite you to come over and see it from our point of view. I take a couple of issues with, first with what the architect presented tonight, he referred to this a couple of times as a three- and four-story building, it's a five-story building all day, it's, it's an additional story from what they're existing, and it's that much closer to our houses at Juniper Road and Birch Circle. They talked about setback, that they've set back their, the building from Amesbury, this, their setback is from their proposal, which was a zero setback, but the setback is really no setback to us, it's exactly where the existing building sits, so that's a major concern. The architect mentioned eliminating the balconies, which was nice of them to do, but this doesn't eliminate our privacy concerns. Again, it's an additional story, it's that much closer to our houses, you know, these residents can look into our, into our yards, into our houses with unobstructed views pretty much. And again, I take issue with the photos they give you here and the renderings, I mean, they're all setback, you know, distant views of the building, you don't really get the full size and scope of how close this is to our houses, and how it will have a shadow impact and loss of light. The building expands further back than the existing building, coming towards us in this view, eliminating sunlight, and, and then the relocation of the parking garage to the rear of the building now causes more traffic up and down this road, increases noise and lights, and just more traffic and nuisance to our homes. And those are my major concerns, and still opposed to the size, scope, and density of this project, being so close, being so close to our houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, David Reisman, 9 Juniper Road. First, actually, thank the applicant, we've been working with them, Kirk and I, and I think that they've made some significant improvements to this, to this project, we appreciate that. That said, I want to echo what Mr. Homequest just said, I think at the end of the day, the challenge is that this building in its current size, even with the reduction in number of floors, is incredibly close to our properties, and when they talk about 79.8 feet, they're talking about 79.8 feet from the back corner of my house, so I'm very familiar with that. There's just very specific concerns about privacy, about light, that have not been answered yet. I think that when we think about shadows and shadow studies, the applicant was kind enough to conduct a shadow study, which they've shared with us, I am not a shadow study expert, and I won't pretend to be, I understand that they are done at certain times of the year, but that doesn't matter at all to the people who are living in the house at the other times of the year, when I can guarantee you that the data that the shadow study presents is not accurately reflecting what happens in my house on a daily basis. So I'm not convinced that the loss of natural light will not be more significant than is shown in the shadow study that they have submitted, and I would respectfully request the board consider, if other studies are being peer-reviewed, why this one be peer-reviewed. The road in the back that's gonna empty out into Amesbury, which I know was in question for a while, I think creates very significant concerns for us. I drive to the boat several days a week, and I drive to Boston several days a week, so I'm pretty familiar with the traffic. You know, I think that there will be certain people who come out and come to Amesbury to take the right to go to Boston, because it will be much faster than going past Bright Horizons and dealing with that, what's now quite a disaster frankly, and taking a right at the signaled intersection. You know, the headlights and the noise from those will affect our backyards very significantly, perhaps even shining through our house, and I'd like to know more about that. So this is new information that the applicant hasn't even had a chance to respond to, so certainly that's something that they can, they can do in time. Finally, I'd echo Mr. Homequest's request and cordially invite all of you to our properties for a site walk. I do think that we are uniquely affected, and standing in our yards, we're at the end of Juniper Road, you will see why we are so concerned. Lars was kind enough to come do that, he was actually in my house, we had a nice meeting, and spent some time in our yard walking around, so he has a very good sense of the property, and I would hope that you would want to do the same. Thank you.
What route do you take when you drive to the boat?
I'm that lazy, yes, I do drive to the boat from, you know, 50-Foot Way.
I picked that part up.
Yeah, so I go to the end of Bradley Woods Drive, take a right, I go down to the main light by Bright Horizons and go back.
And then you make it right there?
I do, yeah. Given the gymnastics and fiasco that happens at the end of the day, when people are drag racing to get off the boat, literally running, to be the first ones out, I think it's very reasonable to consider that they will do whatever they can and try anything they can to use that new back entrance in ways that we haven't or can't even conceive of yet. Thank you.
Thanks. There was someone else over there? Yes, yeah.
Liz Dela Sandro, and I'm at 130 HMS Whittaker Lane, I'm part of the Hewitt's Landing Board, and I have talked with you before, and we've been talking with Avalon as well, so we appreciate all the work that's being done here. Clearly, this is a very dynamic piece of property, and I think, I want to just echo that we are still very concerned about how you get in and out of this property. If you look at the map, I think that you had up there earlier, people trying to get into this property, it looks like the only way to get in is Shipyard Drive, which brings us back to that Essington corner that we were just talking about earlier, that is a real safety issue, and I appreciate that we're gonna build some nice sidewalks for pedestrians to cross over, but I actually suggest you try going to those crosswalks, because it's really, it's dangerous. So I don't think that we've, I don't think that we've quite mitigated the safety issue yet in that area. And I think just as an owner of Hewitt's Landing and in this inner community, I think you asked it earlier, Mr. Chairman, what do you think is going to happen with a lot of people who are trying to find a workaround? And we do, we fear that we're gonna have more people driving aimlessly in the inner roads, and that is a further safety issue to people who may not be prepared for people driving fast, not realizing it's a dead end. So we really have to figure out a strategy to either put up more signage regarding dead ends, do not enter, because people will find their ways to try to get out of the property. I have personally tried to stop fast traffic myself, and one of the biggest things that our neighbors keep even saying at Hewitt's Landing, and if you, if you know where the property is, we're actually in the back, we're near the water, people speed down those roads immensely, and we even have considered putting in speed bumps, but we also realize what the, how that might impede traffic as well, and even just snow services and things on the property. So I think, I'm just, I want to highlight again, we are really concerned about safety and also the privacy of our property. The size of the building is still way too dense, I think. Again, just looking at it, how do people get in and out of this property? I've been just writing on this map saying, if I'm going south, or if I'm heading home, how do I get into the Avalon 2 project? Because the garage entrance is only on that new road, you can't get into the property any other way. I don't know if there's an option to add an entrance in the front of the property, but only having one way to get into the Avalon property is a challenge. The other thing is, I have to say, I appreciate the traffic study, and there's a lot of statements about this property doesn't have the amount of traffic that was expected. It's also true that the property isn't fully occupied, there's a lot of empty tenants in this property, and so it isn't fully occupied, and actually the boat doesn't run on the weekends during the winter, so some of the study may not have been done during the summer hours. But I think the property was expected to be something like maybe the Derby Street Shops, but we just don't have that kind of design yet, and if we did have the Derby Street Shops, we would be at that capacity of traffic that I think maybe was anticipated originally, it's just that there isn't a lot of occupancy in the shipyard with true retail shops. So again, I just want to highlight that, again, just the traffic in this whole area is very concerning, and I also think the two-lane exit does make sense to what we just talked about, and I really hope that the MBTA will work with you to shut down some of those access areas, because that becomes a complete gridlock, because people actually just push out into the road, they don't even care that there's people trying to get home. I mean, I know, if I try to get home or go to the fresh, you can't get anywhere, so I definitely have a bike, it's handy in my garage, and I get on the bike. But that doesn't work all the time, especially in the winter, so we really appreciate you taking a really close look at how else can you get in and out of the property, and what can be done to mitigate it. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening, Ron Kenya, 179 Stainer. I'd just like to reiterate what I've heard from some of the other speakers, I still don't think we've totally addressed the issues of just the overall site density, even though we've spoken and they've proposed going from 250 to, I think, 190. even though we've spoken and they've proposed going from 250 to, I think, 190. I still think 190 units is way too dense for the overall community. From a height perspective, the fifth floor with the gabled roof, if I'm reading the elevation diagrams properly, the top of the gabled roof, I think is 66 feet high. I think that is way too tall. I think it's going to stick out. I think as the other gentleman said, you see everything from a distance, but 66 feet is, you know, I think pretty high for the surrounding community and what that means. One of the variances that's being asked for is to go to five stories. I think if it was cut down to four stories, it would eliminate the height by about 12 feet, it would eliminate 28 units, which would bring it down to 162. That's still 75% more units than the big apartment building in the Avalon 1 section. So I think there are ways to, you know, remove some of the, the density and the height considerations and I hope the board engages Avalon going forward to see what we can do about rectifying that. Thank you.
Okay, Emily, let's talk about schedule.
Could we, I'm sorry, could we back up just one second and, and just cover again what are the expected items that the board wants to see before we reconvene? Because that, I think, will speak to what the, what kind of schedule we can pursue. So I've heard that we need a photometric plan, perhaps some more information on the sewer infrastructure upgrades. And then is there any information that the board feels it needs related to the traffic mitigation plans?
I think Jeff has really gone over
Okay.
the issues. And I think we've gotten his report. I've had a chance to look at it and I'm going to look at it further. What, what's your availability over the next two weeks? I'm talking about either the 13th or the 20th.
Both of our consulting engineers are available next Wednesday, the 13th. So as long as the applicant commit to providing the additional details that you'll need by next Wednesday, maybe that could be our next meeting date.
Yeah, because I'm thinking of a meeting on the 13th and the 20th.
The 20th is fine, you just have like four or five other public hearings scheduled that evening unrelated.
Okay. And I know we also have one, a meeting scheduled on Monday, the 11th. I'd like to keep this on track. Are you, are you available next Wednesday, the 13th? In terms of other items that we need, I think we've got what we want on transportation in terms of the information, engineering. Are you comfortable with what, the information we've got? I didn't see gaps.
I'm comfortable, yeah.
Susan, is there any other reports that you think we should be looking for?
No, it may be in the peer review letters, I just need to go back and check, but if it's, if it's not in a consolidated fashion, it would be helpful if the peer review consultants provided, proposed language for the conditions. So, you know, Emily and I could, you know, work together on drafting them, but sometimes the peer review consultants have kind of industry standard type language for conditions. And if that's the case, then if they haven't already and could provide that to Emily, that would be helpful.
Yeah, my, my read of the peer review report has been they've identified where items have been answered and where items have not been answered, they have in fact proposed certain conditions that we.
Okay, I haven't had a chance to go through them in that detail, so I'm just mentioning it, if it's, if it's needed, that would be helpful, but if we have it already.
Yeah, I think, but, but putting it in a more consolidated form, I think would be helpful.
Right.
Joe, there was a request from one of the neighbors about a peer review on the shadow study, is that something that Vinesse Associates or Amory Associates? I don't know about cost and stuff like that, but if, do we already have someone on board?
It's actually not a part of the record yet, so
Oh.
we haven't received the shadow study, so maybe
I was going to ask you about.
we should view it perhaps next Wednesday and then make a determination whether it requires review in the past. As a matter of practice, the board has reviewed shadow studies previously, but not, not required peer review of that information.
Is there a reason we don't, that hasn't been submitted? Is it still tentative?
We just, we just got a formal final version of it completed earlier today as we were finalizing the renderings for this presentation. So the, as was mentioned, I had shown an early draft of the shadow study to some of the residents of Bradley Woods so they could understand. And that shadow study not only shows our proposed shadow impacts, but also the existing shadow impacts of the existing building, 19 buildings, so they could be a comparison of the two.
Right.
But as the full model was built to support these renderings, which again was just completed earlier today, we just have that done today and trying to be respectful of your stated preference before of not receiving things the day of the hearing, but yes, we can submit that first thing tomorrow morning so that there's the benefit of the entire week for review.
Okay.
Joe, related to that, I'm sorry, this isn't really a legal comment, so I apologize. To the comment of the perspectives, I know that when you drive down the end of Bradley Woods Drive, you can see what's there existing. So you come down Bradley Woods Drive, you see the existing Avalon. Is it possible for the architect to do a rendering if you're driving down Juniper to do what the perspective is?
Yes.
Because then you
Then you can do it.
And so you could take an actual, this is what it looks like when you're driving down Bradley Woods Drive, because that dead ends and then Juniper has the same dead end and that might be a perspective that's helpful.
Yes, we can, we can attempt to do that. It's, it gets a little complicated because topography and all that other kind of stuff. We certainly can do that, but it's, like all of these, it's a best guess of what we think it'll be, but we certainly can do that. It's actually in fact something I discussed with them, that we were going to pursue putting together. I unfortunately fell L last week for the majority of the week, so I'm sort of way behind schedule, but the architect has been rushing to get this model done for today, but we can certainly approach getting that done for next week.
It's just an idea.
No, I think that's a great suggestion.
No, I agree. I mean, Dave is right. I stood in their backyard and I'm like, okay, I get it now. So it's, nothing they're saying is, is out of line in my perspective. So yes, I think it would be beneficial for everyone to try and better understand it.
Yep. And I would encourage the individual members of the board to do a site walk. I don't think we need to schedule it as a meeting so that we'd be publicly noticed and we'd all go together. Our schedules are probably tough, so I just encourage everyone to be able to walk, walk and/or drive the property and get our own perspectives. So with that, is the applicant available next Wednesday?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So I would accept a motion to continue this hearing to 7:00 PM on the 13th of April.
So moved?
Just a second. All in favor? We are continued. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.